Your cell phones during the meeting, please. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Colin Mall for Selectmen. We're here tonight to present and answer questions on the Emergency Radio Services Project and the HVAC projects. These are projects that we've been working on for the past couple of years. I want to thank everybody involved for all their time and effort that has gone into them. A lot of work and consideration has gone into this process. So I'm going to do a few introductions. I'll start over on your left side. Captain Palmer. Chief Cannon. And consultants from Communications Design Consulting Group. Norman Boucher. Anthony Lingon. Chief Spencer. Chief Cunningham. Town Attorney Derek Donnelly. DPW Director Lee Corbett. IT Director, Dr. Osliger. Finance Director Danny Moore. And Board of Finance Chair Eric Carrington. We also have members from the Board of Education with us, who I'll introduce when we present the HVAC projects. Also, I want to thank all the members of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance for their time and thoughtfulness and approval of these projects. We plan on having a question and answer at the end of the presentation, so please hold all your questions until the end. And then just a reminder that questions and comments will be designated for subfield residents and electors. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Chief Cannon to present the Emergency Radio Services Project.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. Thank you for your attention. My intent is to provide a broad overview of why we need a system. And I'll lead the technical team to our consultants by just kind of go through a little bit of history relative to this project and how we ended up here. Essentially, why do we need a communication system? Essentially, our system is thirty-two years old. Most systems are built to last twenty to twenty-five years. And typically, we talk about end-of-life in terms of its operation. Typically, end-of-life system is when the components for the system stop being made. They're generally available for the next seven to eight years in circulation to be used and purchased for replacement, things of that nature. Our system is thirty-two years old. It is beyond end-of-life. The system isn't made anymore, and we are losing the ability to even locate parts and components. Essentially, by virtue of what our vendor currently has told us, is that if there are certain components that happen to break, the entire system will fail, and we won't have any communications at all. We also look at a public safety concern relative to coverage in town. Right now, we have a variety of areas that we have either very poor or no communication, and that encompasses all of the emergency services and potentially DPW as well. And I'll go through that in a little bit more detail. And lastly, if we do not have the ability to communicate with one another in our dispatch center, we lose the ability to coordinate large-scale events and things of that nature, which will impact resources getting to those events and our ability to address those events in a timely, efficient manner and could affect the safety of not only those responding, but wherever that incident may be, the people in that particular area. Currently on the system, the police department, fire department, subfield voluntary ambulance association, subfield public schools, DPW are all part of the system, and we use it on a daily basis. Additionally, any incoming deportments, whether it's fire service, ambulance, police, that may come in for mutual aid, they also may need to piggyback off of that same system. How we got to this point in particular relative to our system. Our system currently, we've been able to kind of recreate the timeline on the basis of some documents that we've obtained, both through Town Hall and as well as at the PD. The current system we have was initiated back in nineteen ninety. For whatever reason, the contractor left the job unfinished. We were able to identify a couple of residents in town that had expertise in this area, and they completed the project, and the current communication system came online in nineteen ninety-two. During that time, about eighteen years later, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, an effort was made to try to refresh the system a little bit, upgrade it, to try to extend its life. Funding was secured for three separate phases for that project. They were able to complete Phase One and Phase Two. Phase Three was not able to be completed. Part of Phase Three involved work on the towers, adding equipment to those towers, and they had done a structural analysis of those towers, and determined that the Phase Three offering could not be done at that time, so it was left unfinished. Since I've gotten here in two thousand nineteen, there's been whispers of the need for a new system. We've hinted at it with ACE and the Boards of Selectmen and Finance briefly. And in twenty-one, twenty-two, after we started to have some issues with the current system, the vendor had come out several times to address a couple of issues. They really started to harp on us the inability for them to get replacement parts for the entirety of the system. So we determined at that point it was necessary to start taking some proactive steps. Initially, we met with our current vendor, Goose Town, and had them kind of give us a fifty-thousand-foot overview of what it would look like to try to replace the system and the potential costs. Additionally, knowing that there's the state communication systems out there and an ability to join that as well, we started to have conversations with the state through their vendor Motorola on the same issue. Again, they gave us a rough order of magnitude on the potential costs, somewhere in the six-million-dollar range, generally speaking. And I also spoke to several of my peers, who were also going through the same process, and spoke to them with respect to some of the costs and things of that nature. We brought that information forward during the budget cycle to the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, at which point it was determined we were not going to fund it immediately on the basis of what the vendors had said, and the determination was made to provide funding for purposes of the RFP and hiring a consultant to represent the interest of the town in such a project. So at that point in time, I believe it was early twenty twenty-three, or maybe March or April of twenty twenty-three, I drafted an RFP for purposes of obtaining and searching for a consultant. That passed through the town attorney for compliance with our processes, and that was posted. And in June, July, we received bidders, and at the end of that process, we came up and offered the contract to Communications Design Consulting Group, who's been with us since that time. During the course of our work with them, late two thousand three, so probably August through November of that year, there were multiple meetings held with our consultant. They had the ability to come down, view all of our equipment, look at our sites, and conduct analysis on our radio coverage, and then begin the process of recommending a system in terms of what they would recommend to fill the gaps that we were having from a communication perspective, but also to refresh the entire system, so that we would have a new system for the next twenty to thirty years. They completed the draft report in November. We had some additional conversation as a committee, and ultimately, the report, final report, was finalized in the beginning of January of twenty twenty-four. And I'll let Norm and Chief discuss themselves and their experience.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. My name is Norm Boucher, and I'm with Communications Design Consulting Group. We specialize, Chief and I are partners. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, way better.
Chief and I have been working together on the public safety radio projects for thirty-plus years, and we've worked on projects nationwide, from statewide projects, county-wide projects, large cities, small towns, so we've had pretty much exposure to different types of public safety communications environment. The town of Subfield is not unique, I guess, in some respects to radio communications. So today's system, like many towns that have not upgraded their radio systems, the radio communication system is based on a mobile radio and not a handheld portable, which everyone uses nowadays. So today's infrastructure in town consists of just a single repeater for police at the police department, a single repeater for the fire department, located at the fire department, and they each have just two remote receivers, one at Station Four, one at Station Three, and that's to pick up the low-power handheld radio. So, you know, as Chief mentioned, he's got issues, coverage issues throughout the, throughout town. So yeah, so this is a diagram of specifically what we're just talking about. So it's critical nowadays that, you know, public safety practitioners need to, they need to, you know, utilize handheld radios. We all have smartphones, we can talk where we're at. You know, we don't expect folks nowadays to run back out to the cruiser or, you know, to the fire apparatus and make a radio call, especially ambulance and EMTs needing to communicate inside a building. So the current system is really pretty inadequate to provide signal coverage in not only open spaces in town, but especially inside of buildings.
With respect to the current system, you'll see up there, we have a four-site system, essentially, fire headquarters, police headquarters. We use a fire station at, in Thompsonville, Fire Station Four, and Fire Station Three out on Copper Hill Road. Essentially, communications come from the dispatch center located at the police department, and they'll pass through the two towers at the firehouse, main firehouse in the center of town, and the police department, and reach out and basically repeat off of the two towers on the eastern and western parts of town to the either mobile radio or the portable radios. In order to communicate back, it's a push of the key on either of those, the portable or mobile. It'll hit those same repeater sites out west or out east, and revert back into the main towers, back into the center of town. We do have additional placement of items located at the middle school, the high school, and DPW as well to enhance communication. This map here basically identifies areas of concern that we've identified as an emergency services group. The areas in tan and color, the green outline, those are currently areas where we have either poor or no reception on a very regular basis. So as you can see, they cover significant areas of the town. You look out west, it's really along the western town line, across the mountain, and then in the northeast and southeast corners. What I would relate to you is reference to that southeast corner. A couple of months ago, we had an issue at Hood where there was an ammonia leak. We had in excess, I would say, of eighty hazmat fire officers there, other components of fire marshal's office, ambulance services, and police services out there. Excuse me. At the outset of that event, there was immediate concern for the area, and the officers on patrol started going door-to-door evacuating CNS, making sure Hood was evacuated and there was a residence behind the building, based on when were any leak seemed to be heading. We evacuated one residence to the rear of both of those properties. To that end, as we were all standing there, the only way we could communicate was from inside of the car. Communications coming out from the dispatcher, they were not hitting any of the portals for any of us, so oftentimes, we're standing there trying to coordinate the event, and we weren't getting communications from dispatch, unless somebody happened to be near a car or stationed somebody in a car. Then we could actually communicate back and forth. If we were to use our portable radio, that wouldn't go all the way through either. It was strictly communication by the mobile radios. And as you can imagine, if that had been a much more significant event, where we were talking about having to evacuate more properties and homes, that would have been very difficult to do while also trying to maintain scene security and safety for everybody else involved in case there was a wind shift. Excuse me. I only bring that up to illustrate what can happen in town, and that's a real-life example that we've experienced just within the last two months of bad radio coverage. During the course of the study that Norman and Chief provided, they did coverage maps, kind of outlined for us what we, what the current system is currently offering. And if you look at these particular maps, the blue area is where we have coverage inside of a residential building. Yellow is in-street coverage, so that's potentially somebody standing on North Street or, you know, Copper Hill Road, and the ability for the portable to pick up that coverage. This particular map represents the police portable talk-out, and when we use the term "talk-out," we're talking about dispatch reaching out to the officers in the field or any of the emergency services in the field. So as you can see here, areas of gray are where we're concerned with when we talk about little to no coverage in terms of radio coverage and the ability to communicate. What you look at here from the ability for dispatch to talk to the police, you start to see a little more of that gray area out west, particularly, and that is, you know, our indication of whether or not the communication is going to get to us. This is the police ability to return communication back to dispatch. This is the talk-back group. Same criteria, but when you look at it, you start to see along, particularly along the northern border with Massachusetts, you start to see more gray in there, inability or likelihood of lesser ability to communicate. And again, when you look down in the southeast corner of town, that area that I just described for the event at Hood, you start to see a little more gray there. This is the same map for the fire department. Again, it's the western edge of town where you start to see a little more darker coverage in their ability to receive communications. And again, it's very similar to the police relative to their ability to communicate back to dispatch. The northern edge of town, the center of town is a little more cut off for the fire department, and again, that southeast corner. When we talk about EMS, ability to receive communications, they're relatively comfortable, except for maybe that northern corner, up by Rising Corner, and this is their ability to communicate back to dispatch. And you can see, there's a significant issue relative to their ability to communicate back to dispatch. Again, that could hamper their ability to get additional resources as necessary. Sometimes, those resources are required based on the level of the event that's taking place. There's a difference between somebody who is perhaps having a non-life-threatening event versus the resources we're going to provide for a life-threatening event. We're going to need to be able to communicate that back to dispatch. You see, the central part of the town is pretty significantly cut off for them, along with the entire northern edge of town as well. And when we talk about DPW, they typically use mobiles. They do have a couple of portables for their upper command staff, but they're predominantly using their vehicles, plows, things like that. And again, we're talking about blue coverage is good. Any areas of gray are lesser coverage or no coverage. Again, they're predominantly limited to the west side of town. So those all typically represent basically the areas of concern that we've had over the course of our time and our conversations, what we've described to Chief and Norm.
So initially, after reviewing the, as is coverage which the Chief just went over, we began to do a little bit more analysis and try to come up with a scheme or an infrastructure that would provide reliable and even signal coverage throughout the town area. So that's, that's difficult because you have the terrain working against you. So we do follow a standard that the industry, the public safety communication industry follows to predict coverage, and that's how these maps are generated. At minimum, you know, as we're looking at the maps there, we want to extinguish, you know, every dark, gray spot there, right? So at minimum, we need street coverage, but we do need a high level of in-building coverage as well. And then on the eastern part of town, we've got some larger buildings, industrial-type buildings, so those, you know, those need, you know, larger signals to penetrate inside the building. So even schools, malls, you know, that sort of thing will require, you know, more signal in that area to get into a portable inside of that building. So. Okay, yeah, so, so the standard calls for a certain, certain signal level to be maintained at ninety-five percent of the area of town. So essentially, if you were to pick a random location, with the new system, you pick a random location, you do a radio call from there, ninety-five percent of the time, you're going to get, you're going to get, the call's going to come through both from the dispatcher's side and the field units' side. That's pretty much the standard for years. Ninety percent was used, but that was, it was always, we were left with a lot of areas that didn't have sufficient signals. So some communities go to ninety-seven percent, you know, which is a little higher, but that will require usually more sites in order to obtain ninety-seven percent. So I would say, you know, ninety-five percent of public safety radio design are based on this ninety-five percent criteria. And within that ninety-five percent, there's also a component called the AQ, delivered audio quality, so not to get too complicated here, but whenever there's a transmission, that audio is going to be clear. It's, you know, no noise in the background, it's going to be intelligible, you know, for both sides of the communications to be understood. So our analysis identified that we should provide five, five transmitter sites to provide uniform signal propagation throughout the town. And so any time you're going to transmit from a site on more than one site, two sites or more, you have to, there are special equipment that you have to use to sync the sites together so that they don't interfere with each other. So typically, if you have two transmitters that are not synced, they will interfere and cause interference, and the voice is intelligible. So the system with five sites has to be synced, and that's usually done with GPS receivers at each location. They also have to have an internet or ethernet connection between the sites so that they can talk to each other and that the audios are launched at the same time, so that anywhere as you are in the county, you're going to get a good, good quality signal. So we call that transmitter several casts. We also have those five receivers out there at the different sites, so all those receivers at any one time, I may be standing right outside the building here, and I might push the talk on my radio. Out of the five sites, maybe two sites, maybe three sites, maybe four sites will receive my signal. It all gets transported to a voting comparative where audio quality is looked at, and then the best signal, the best audio is selected, and that's what's rebroadcasted on a transmitter several cast site. So that's how we develop whatever coverage, and it's pretty reliable and pretty effective that you can get. You know, pretty even signal levels across the town and very good audio.
Okay, with respect to the diagram you're looking at, that's essentially the proposed new system that our consultants had designed. Deals with, like Norm said, a five-site system, the police department. We would use a tower at the landfill, additionally, a tower at Station Four. We would also put equipment on the water tower located on Betty Lane, and then we would use a tower just over the line of, on one fifty-nine, in Hagewang, Omni Point Tower there. Essentially, based upon that diagram, the project itself would require the building of two new towers, tearing down the towers currently at the fire department, at Station Four, and the police department, and building new towers there, in addition to adding equipment to the landfill tower, Betty Lane Tower, and then adding equipment onto the Omni Point Tower. So that would give us three towers in the eastern part of town, one centrally located and one out west. Additionally, obviously, we would be replacing the equipment located at the schools, so that we have immediate contact with the schools, and they would have immediate contact with the dispatch center as well, and that also works on behalf of the DPW as well. Excuse me. So as we move forward, after receiving that information, our selection committee, these are the members of the selection committee, First Selectman Mall, myself, Chief Cunningham from the fire department, Chief Spencer from Voluntary Ambulance Association, and is also the town's emergency management director, Lee Corbett from DPW, and Becky Osliger of the Director of IT. So as we move forward through the process from this point forward, that's the committee that work directly with the consultants on the basis of any decisions to be made. I would just indicate that at all times prior to, through the process, if at any point there were any questions, I was generally the one to reach out to Attorney Donnelly. Sometimes, the First Selectman would have a communication as well, but ultimately, our goal was to ensure that we were adhering to the guidelines that the town has put together relative to the RFP process. And then obviously, as I just said, the RFP for the project itself is put together by our consultants, and part of our contract with them is for them to assist us through that process. I am an end-user to the system, as most of us are, so when it comes down to making sure that if the contract says we're getting a widget, it's our consultant's responsibility to make sure we're getting a widget, and they provide a good services for that. So relative to that, once the RFP was completed, it was put out. So here's the timeline for the RFP. I'll go through it briefly, provide a little detail, but I'm sure there'll be some questions later, so we can try to answer those now, but we'll get to those questions when the time comes. So the RFP was posted on the town website in April of twenty-four. During that timeframe, it basically called for the build of a five-site system based on the recommendation from our consultant. We arranged to meet with any potential bidders on May tenth at the police department, where we'd have a brief conversation, and then we'd visit all the current sites or the proposed sites for purposes of the new system. On that day, we had three bidders come in, one of which was from the state, who immediately indicated that they were not going to adhere to the RFP guideline. They were basically, if we're going to do a state system, meaning we would still, we the town, would still need to build the infrastructure, but we would piggyback into the state system, and there are some issues and concerns there, meaning if we were to go on to the state system from that perspective and let their vendor build the system, we would need to build it to the state specs. And if the state specs changed, the town would be required to make the necessary adjustments to meet those specifications. So there was going to be some discussion about whether we moved to a state system and put ourselves into that particular arena, or if we just build our own system and we have total control of it, when to upgrade it, and things of that nature. So on May tenth, we did all the tower visits. There was a timeframe for the bidders to provide any questions back to us. There was a timeframe for the bidders to provide any questions back to us, at which point we worked with our consultants to answer those questions, and those questions and the answers were also posted to the town website on May twenty-second. The original due date for the proposals was June seventh. Unfortunately, I missed an email relative to a couple of questions. I caught it, we were able to answer those questions, make sure that answer was posted online as well, and we extended the due date to another week for June fourteenth. On June fourteenth, I received two bids, two separate vendors. We met as a committee, we had conversations with consultant, and I had conversations with the town attorney, because at that time, it was determined that one of the bids did not meet a five-site build. It had a three to four-site build versus the five-site build that was requested via the spec. In an attempt to have it continue to be a competitive process and have additional conversation relative to that, a decision was made to allow them to modify their bid to be compliant with the spec and the build of the five-site system. That was done, and on July sixteenth, we offered both bidders the opportunity to come in, discuss their bid with us, and allowed the committee to ask questions of them relative to their bill and get some additional questions answered. The consultants also had the ability to have those same conversations. And then as of September twelfth, I'd noticed that the awards went out to the vendors, with the winning bidder being notified and the other party being notified that they were not selected.
Yeah, so as Chief mentioned, there was quite an elaborate evaluation process with the six members. Each individually scored each vendor's proposals and numerically, and so those were gathered up, and then the scores were summed up, and, you know, as the chief mentioned, Guston was the, was the winner. So they were notified, and that was after the second bidder that did not bid, the specification was given the opportunity to, you know, upgrade their proposal, which they did, and so, you know, that was in the evaluation as well. So the town was looking at two comparable bids, each based on five sites. And as I mentioned, Guston was, was selected, so we, so the question came up, you know, we, the one bidder came up with three or four sites, you know, they think three or four sites would do the work, and, and it's possible, I guess, but, you know, our analysis shows that the five-site system does provide the minimum requirement that we're looking for, you know, for hand help of the safety communications of town. So with the selected bidder and the evaluation team, we sat down and we discussed, you know, the values of, you know, should it, should it be less than a five-site system? And I believe, you know, it was the consensus of the committee that the five-site system would give them the coverage that's needed, especially for a large building. So, you know, as the chief mentioned, three of the sites on that eastern part of town, so we've got a site right outside the border in Agawam, one at Station Four, one at Betty Lane Water Tank. Those will give you excellent coverage of that corridor with this large building. So I think everybody was pretty much. So everybody was in, in pretty good agreement that the five-site system would be, is the minimum requirement to, for communications, police and fire, especially in EMS.
From that time moving forward, we, the committee, along with the consultants, had several additional conversations with the winning bidder to begin finalization of what a contract would look like, determine what costs would look like, and things of that nature. As we went through that, we did make a couple of additions, specifically dealing with radio programming, fire ground, compatibility with the state system, carrier support on the new towers to be built, and then we reduced the maintenance from enhanced to standard, resulting in the current proposed costs. And that's what we used essentially to identify what we currently have in terms of our proposal. This map is an indication of where the five sites are located, so you see the one at the landfill, the one at the police department, one out at Station Four in Thompsonville, one north of that, just over the line, American Tower into Agawam, and one south, Betty Lane. This is mobile talk-out. This is the projected analysis of what the new system will do. So when you look at this, this is the ability to receive communications by virtue of your vehicle radio, and you're looking for dark spots that would indicate areas of no coverage. And as you can see, we'd be, should be able to receive communications within the entire town limit. And this would be our ability to return communications back to dispatch, and as you can see, the eastern side is completely covered now, and we just have one small spot in the southwest corner, but for the vast majority of it, we've enhanced that process relative to the mobile radio. When we talk about portable radio communications, this is our ability to receive communications out in the field. As you can see, there's minimal if no issues along the mountain and the western part of town. Additionally, the northern corridor along the state line is now covered, and the Connecticut River Valley is now covered as well without any dark areas there, so we should have solidified and enhanced the entirety of the system. Again, with the exception of that smaller area, it's a vastly improved ability to receive communications and to be able to talk back to dispatch. And this would be the talk back. Again, it's very similar to the receiving, and it's just that area in the southwest part of town. Outside of that, the majority of the area's been rectified and will have the ability to communicate back to dispatch.
One quick word on the maps that you see here. The shaded area is the, the coverage area provided by the five sites, and so this is guaranteed coverage by the vendor, so there's gonna be extensive testing to ensure that what the town bought is, you know, is actually what they're gonna be receiving, so this is guaranteed coverage by the vendor.
With respect to the remainder of the build, a couple of things to keep in mind. Each tower site requires a shelter for equipment and generators in case there's a loss of power. Currently, at the landfill and the American Tower in Agawam, there's vacant shelters there that we can purchase in lieu of having to build a new one at almost half the cost. So that would be pending a site review, but that would likely be the case where we could purchase them, obviously, to reduce costs and save some fun, money there, some funding. Additionally, relative to use of the towers themselves at the landfill and Betty Lane Water Tank, we already have existing agreements with them where the town has the ability to put equipment on there, so that would be done at no cost. Use of the other tower in Agawam, we do not have such an agreement in place, and we would have to pay a rental fee of roughly three thousand dollars a month or thirty-six thousand dollars a year for use of that particular tower. And we do have to provide fiber as well. I'll let Becky speak to that briefly.
So part of the radio project, is it working? Okay, sorry. So part of the underlying foundation of the radio system, currently, we have a T-one line that runs from the nine-eleven Mountain Road Police Station, which heads up Mountain Road. That T-one line is an older technology, outdated, cross-copper wires, so we're looking at fiber so that we can build this system on a more reliable foundation. In addition to just having this fiber for the radio system, you'll see on here some anticipated savings. We have various sites, we have various sites throughout the town, the fire departments and the landfill where we currently pay internet service provider, Cox Communications, so we'll be able to drop all of those services and charges, lots of hardware, some hardware savings at those sites as well to have that internet access, but it also gets the entire radio on our town network and the ability to connect all those sites, completing the entire town on one foundation, so.
And I would just say, currently, along with the T-one line and copper lines that we're using, we do experience issues at certain times of year. The copper lines will actually flood from time to time, whether it's a heavy rainstorm or a snow runoff, melting snow, things of that nature, where it actually knocks down that western tower and makes our system unusable in the western part of the town during that timeframe. Requires a site visit by our vendor to go out there and try to address the issue, and I would say that probably happens three or four times a year, minimally. So the fiber lines would eliminate that particular issue. So at the end, essentially, this is the, the cost of the radio project in its entirety. The radio project itself would cost us roughly four point two seven three million, with the added options for the state compatibility and some of those, the fire ground and some of those items. That's another hundred and six thousand dollars. We typically add in a ten percent contingency just in case there's a runover, certain items of equipment become higher in cost than anticipated, things of that nature, so that's added in there, and the one-time fiber costs. The total project is five point two two eight million. With that, bonds are required to be in five thousand dollar increments, so the ask and the resolution, I believe, tonight is for five point two three million to go ahead and get started on our radio project.
So just wanted to show you guys what the approval process was to get it to the point of bonding. Both the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance had to approve it. It was unanimously voted on, and tonight, we have to take the town meeting, which will be at seven thirty, to vote for these bond authorizations. So we wanted to give you a brief impact on taxes. We're looking at a minimal impact on the upcoming fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six budget. The debt payments would commence fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, and probably the amount of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, which is less than one percent of the budget, our existing debt service costs will decrease by six hundred and seventy-five thousand in fiscal year twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Just last year's fiscal year budget, twenty-four, twenty-five, we did have a three million dollar surplus, and then our town reserves, capital non-recurring, have been increased in anticipation of large projects. I want to say we moved around two billion dollars from last year's fiscal budget into the CNRD account. And finally, we'll just begin the question and answer portion of this. So what I'm gonna do is just start on my right side of the room. We'll make our way across. If you have any questions, just raise your hand, state your name and address for the record. We also have them walking around with the microphone, so start on your left side. Is there anyone over here with any questions? Good. Make my way through the middle here.
Can you give me a break, how much greater? Your, your selection process seems, seems very solid. One question maybe is the use of really innovative technology. To the consultants, have you looked at the merger technologies such as five G, such as satellite-based communications? T-Mobile, for example, has introduced T-Priority, a dedicated five G system for first responders, their first customers, the entire city of New York, New York City. So I'm just wondering what other technologies we'll look at as part of this evaluation
So, so the systems that you just mentioned, five G, you know, it's a cellular-based system, so it's a smartphone usage, which has a place in public safety. It's used every day by police, fire, EMS, municipal departments, but not for mission-critical communications. You need to have more reliable signals to get inside buildings. A lot of cellular systems cannot do that. It's a network that you don't have control. There are several cell sites that don't even have generators, so, you know, it's, when I say mission-critical, you need to have that system, or you need to be able to communicate when something bad is happening, and, and so you need a system of your own to, you know, to allow that communication. Now, as you mentioned, New York City, New York City has, uses lots of communications systems, and they do have their own mission-critical network, which is two-way radio, which is essentially what we're talking about here, and not, not a telephone service where you, you know, you make a call to someone. Mission-critical requires, is a push-to-talk radio system, so it's one-to-many. So dispatcher talks out to, to somebody on the police channel, everybody's gonna hear it. Cell system does not do that. So while there's a lot of emerging technologies, you know, a lot of people ask, oh, what about satellites? Well, satellites are, are great, and I know there's, there's gonna be more and more direct cellular service, you know, through satellites, but they're not gonna talk in buildings or under bridges and, you know, things of that sort, so. I hope I've answered your question?
Well, I, I don't think that you have looked at really what the end of the T-Mobile's T-Priority, because according to the press release that was issued back in, seven months ago, they're talking about using radios, not cell, not cell phones, that was spent of the spender, more of all characters. And I'm assuming with an investment like this, if the process started, you know, eight months, nine months ago, technology has changed. Certainly, your consulting companies based on over-the-air communications, right? And I think that it'd be prudent for everybody here to take a step back and look at these new emerging technologies that are coming to play and see if there are cost savings associated with it. Supplement wire pretty well for five G service throughout the, the environment, so again, appreciate that the time involved, but in, in the emerging technology space, especially with T-Mobile, Verizon, have also had their own service that's dedicated to first responders. So I think it's still prudent that to take a step back and look at what else might be out there, and is there any better solution? You're talking about generators, all, all of these cell companies have generators on their towers, Cox, for example, and they, when they put in their, their phone service was required, they have generator on everything, you know, on everything in that. So I think that's a valid statement about the generators.
Okay, well, so what I didn't mention was, there is a public safety phone service out there called FirstNet. So, you know, we've got AT&amp;T, we've got Verizon, we've got T-Mobile, and we've got FirstNet, which is dedicated for public safety communications. So that was a process that went on nationwide to bring broadband to public safety, and... And so the national broadband public safety organizations, you know, put together an RFP, they went out to bid, and they selected AT&amp;T. They went to the FCC, they had their own spectrum to use, and thus FirstNet was introduced. And it's pretty much used by everyone today in public safety, one form or another. So T-Mobile, Verizon, you know, they never, they didn't win the bid, you know, AT&amp;T did. So they've come up with their own version of, you know, what FirstNet is, and that's what you're seeing with, with T-Mobile. They're valid communications systems. But, you know, they're trying to compete with FirstNet. FirstNet has been given the authority to provide public safety communications nationwide.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Copes, and I live at 223 Henry Street in Suffield. And this gentleman actually asked some of the questions that I was still, that I was going to ask, but I'm still not satisfied with the answer, I guess. First of all, I want to say that I definitely support the need for a new system, there's no doubt about that. But it does bother me that it doesn't seem like other technology options were looked at, at least from what you've shared with us tonight. So that bothers me. Also, it wasn't really clear what the decision, in fact, what the decision-making factors were, the decision criteria for this was it coverage only? There should have been like a matrix. There should have been several factors that were considered and evaluated amongst the Is Goose our current vendor?
Yeah.
The other bit that was submitted, the other proposal, was it similar technology? Were they comparable? You know, what were the differences other than, I think I saw a check that said there was some difference regarding coverage? I also have a question in regards to the ongoing operational costs, annual, the annual operational costs. Where are they going to be out of the new system? Where are they now? How does that differ? So again, I support the project, but I feel like more work needs to be done.
Just as a quick response to that, relative to the evaluation process, we were given a matrix from our consultant, and we did work through that. It dealt with a variety of issues, but ultimately, there was a technical component, overall responsiveness to the RFP, the experience qualifications, past performance, their oral presentation, and partly on pricing. So those were essentially the major criteria. There were subcategories of those as well that were graded, and each person on the selection committee graded on the basis of the rubric that we were given from our consultant. They were turned to the consultant and tabulated for the final assessment. So what I will say is both were done. Both, both were comparable in a sense of final score from the committee. They're within a couple of points of each other. So from that perspective, we did have a grading matrix to work from. With respect to the use of additional technology, when I arrived here in 2009, excuse me, 19, there was, had just been a trial with some type of a cellphone technology for purposes of communications. That did not necessarily meet the standard. Forgive me, I don't recall the name of it. I never used it. I just had a quick hit and knowledge of it. But essentially, what it was requiring was us to log in each time we needed to make a communication rather than just simply hitting a button. Technology may have changed in the last five years. It probably has. That moves so quickly. Excuse me. But what I would also say is the ability for those things to communicate are based on the integrity of the cell structure surrounding it. So if you look at a massive event, a Sandy Hook event, a 9/11 event, all those cellphone towers crashed. If those things crashed because of the sheer volume that's passing through there, that becomes a problem if that's our main reliable source of communication, which is why normally we're saying we always got to have that other push-to-talk system working behind it. Having said that, there was another point I was going to make, and just pull out my head. I apologize. But, some towers. And with respect to FirstNet, we do use AT&amp;T, excuse me, AT&amp;T FirstNet currently for all of our cellular communications. So we have cell phones in each of the vehicles. We're required to take certain steps depending on certain events that we deal with statutorily, and oftentimes, we need a phone to do that, so we provide our officers a phone to do that. My understanding, the way FirstNet works, is it essentially provides priority to those FirstNet subscribers. So if there's a rash of 1,000 phone calls trying to hit off a tower, priority is going to go to those FirstNet subscribers. But again, that doesn't eliminate the potential for a call not to go through or communication not to go through if there's a serious or significant event and we're trying to make communications by using that cellular network.
I would like to add one aspect of my experience with these cell systems. Part of my responsibility is the dispatch center, and I get alerts from the Division of Statewide Emergency Telecommunications every time a cell service has an outage that impacts 911 communication. In the last month, conservatively, we're getting about 15 to 20 of those per day across the spectrum of all the cell providers that provide cellular service to the general public. T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, Verizon, there was a massive outage, which I'm sure most of you are all aware of, not too long ago. I'm sure as time goes on, these emerging technologies will find their way into a more robust position in the first responder community. But if you look at the pictures of the officers, the advertisements for every one of these companies and their new systems, they are standing there talking into some sort of cellular phone or some tablet, and on their person is a radio, which is the backstop to that entire network. So I'm not as familiar with the New York City effort, but so far, we haven't seen anything in the first responder community. And I guess I would offer Chief Spencer and Chief Cunningham an opportunity to respond from their perspective, from Fire EMS, of a cell system that works with the degree of reliability that we get from a radio system.
In respect to going to a cell-based system, we beat the emergency technology thing, but our mutually partners are not going to have that same technology in their vehicles. They're not going to have that same technology in the fire engines in their portables. They will not be able to communicate with us when they come into town on that technology alone. I'm sure there are infrastructure bridges that you can create for that, but you're putting that burden onto other communities in order to talk to us. So to my recollection, I don't know of any EMS agency in the state of Connecticut that is moving towards technology like that. We also have concerns with our ability to talk to the hospitals, as well as our regional communication centers, of which none of them are using technology of that nature at this point.
I can assure you that the New York City Fire Department is using a radio system similar to what we're proposing tonight. They do use, to supplement their activities, cell service, but those are during non-emergency events. So again, the New York City Fire Department, I assure you, uses a system of what we're proposing tonight.
And just to address, I think, another question you may have had. So with respect to ongoing costs, one being the rental of the tower in I-1, that would continue to be an ongoing cost. The standard maintenance agreement would be for a five-year period. Essentially, after the first year, a lot of the equipment is already warranted by the manufacturer. The first four year, the remaining four years, obviously, will be done by our chosen vendor. And that would require them to do checks of the equipment on an annual basis, make sure everything is acting appropriately, it's up to date, things of that nature. Just make sure it's operating appropriately and then address any concerns or issues that might be there. What I can tell you is currently, we are paying, I think, $8,000 a year, roughly, in that range for our services with them. That allows them to come out and address, you know, minor issues, but there's no equipment in reserve. So if something breaks, if they have one on a shelf somewhere and they're willing to let us use it for a period of time while ours gets fixed, great. If there's competing priorities, we might not be able to get that unless we're on the enhanced plan. So there's some adjustments there, but annually, we're paying somewhere between $8,000 and $9,000, I think, for just general, the lack of added maintenance for them to just come out and take a look at our equipment. So I'm sure it would be very similar. The context of this proposal deals essentially with the first five years for maintenance and warranty on the equipment, and then we would deal with that subsequently beyond that. So it would be either a renewal of the maintenance program itself, which is roughly $72,000 a year, or it's, we'll bypass that and we'll go to standard maintenance, which would probably be similar to what we're currently paying, barring any minor, you know, 2% or 3% yearly increases that they may have.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Heidi Wickfield on Caltor. With the proposal you have for the five towers, did you run scenarios if the tower goes down, as the redundancy and coverage picture?
Oh, so all of these towers will provide an area of signal coverage. So there's a lot of overlap between the sites. So if one site does go down, and that's going to be a rare occasion, by the way, because this network is, as I mentioned earlier, is mission-critical, so there's a lot of components in there. There's no single point of failure, right? So I've got a piece of equipment, if it fails, there's something right there to pick up, you know, a backup or a reroute or, you know, some other configuration that keeps the network going and, you know, the radio user can communicate. So from a tower standpoint, though, if one does go down, then there's going to be still sufficient signal, yes, at a lower level, but it's going to cover, you know, that area where we're losing that tower.
Any other questions in the back?
Hi. Good evening. Chris Pickley, Suffield Street. First of all, I want to thank all the first responders, all you guys that are there. The fact that we're here talking about why we should, you know, answer something that you guys are telling us is crazy, but my question centers around, you know, kicking the can down the street. Obviously, we're operating on an iPhone 1, and there's an iPhone 16 out right now, and we're waiting for the CD, for the iPhone 20 to come out before we approve it and give you guys what you need. So as I make consideration of the, into additional costs, everything gets more expensive. So if, you know, people say, hey, look, this is too expensive, and we're going to wait another five years and put our first responders at risk for the next five years, have we looked at what the cost will be if we keep kicking the can down the road?
So since COVID, after COVID, a lot of the manufacturers out there are preying on their equipment. It's kind of subsided right now, but going to the future, I think it's going to be stable. You know, it's hard to tell, but, you know, it should be tied to, you know, to the inflation rate. And with new products coming out, generally, their pricing, because, you know, because of new technology and new software, generally, the pricing, you know, tends to be lower. You know, so I don't, you know, going, going forward, you're going to probably see some increase. You know, how much more is it going to cost you in five years? I don't think we can answer that. But certainly, buying, you know, a system today would sort of prevent, you know, that from increasing.
Any other questions over here?
Hi, this is Shannon. I'm on the other east. Sorry, I'm called. I'm just curious as to what the surrounding, what systems do they use? And is there a comparable area?
Before I turn it off, what I can tell you is, from a state system perspective, they're entirely lacking in the north-central part of the state, Harford County, all the way up through the I-1 border. They don't really have footprint short of a couple of repeaters in the airport and maybe East Grandy to cover the resident trooper town. Outside of that, there's discussion about throwing a tower at Barhamstead sometime in the future, potentially at the jail. But those would be smaller systems that I don't think would be our need necessarily. Outside of that, most towns in the area, although there's a handful that are making, kind of in the same process, most of them have gone to their own system if they're a small enough town. You know, part of our ratio here is geography. We're a large town. We have 43 square miles. So a town like Windsor Locks, who I think might be going to the state system, they've got, is it seven or nine square miles? It's a much smaller area to kind of cover, and they don't have the topography that we have. So with respect to that, for the most part, most towns have gone to their own system, but in this particular area, the state really doesn't have a footprint. And I know our consultants are working in the region as well with another municipality, but they probably have a better idea.
Yeah, so we're also working with East Windsor. East Windsor is, they were planning to put in a system similar to what Suffield is. However, they were able to get a large grant, and they are going on the state system. So the state is going to build, you know, coverage for them in the next year or so. If they, which is more money, you know, probably double the money getting on the state system than putting in your own. But since they got the grant, they were able to do that. We also work with, with Hartford. They put in their own network similar to Suffield, maybe a little bit more sophisticated. It's a trunk system, but, you know, built more for urban areas, but it's, it's the same manufacturer, same setup, same configuration, so. And that's pretty much what you're going to see, not only in Connecticut, but you go throughout New England, the majority of the systems that you're going to come across for public safety, if it's outside of a state network, is going to be, you know, a radio system, which is what the town is buying, Motorola, Harris, Kenwood. But the technology, you know, the manufactured equipment is different, but the configuration and the, and the system itself are very similar. Transmitter simulcast, receiver voting, all linked with IP sites, you know, that is the current state of technology for public safety.
Any other questions in the middle? Let's see one in the back. We're still in the middle.
Hi, I'm Richard Cappell. Menders say a lot of things, they make a lot of promises. I'd say this system- When this system gets put in place, and I think the testing occurs later, and it showed that it wasn't the standard that we asked for. Who determined it's the standard, us or the vendor? What is the process that you're going to get, both of you would have to pay for that?
So if I understand the question correctly, so the vendor will be implementing a brand-new system, and they've guaranteed the coverage that you saw on the screen tonight. So, so we have to test that to ensure that, you know, what they're proposing is what you're buying. And so typically, how that's done is the town will be broken down into very small grids. And each grid will be visited, and a radio call will be made. And if the call is successful, dock back, dock out, it's going to be a pass. If it fails, you know, if there's no communications in that grid, then it fails, right? So you tabulate all of these grids, and they have to total the 95% factor that we, you know, the system is built on. So if it's less than that, then they haven't, they haven't met their contract requirements, right? So they would have to come in and, you know, get it up to the 95% level. That being said, I'm going to say 98% of the systems that go in, even though they're designed for 95% reliability, when you go out there and do the actual testing, you're 97, 98% versus a 95. So there's some buffer there that the vendors, you know, put in their designs so that they will pass these tests.
Derek Donnelly, town attorney. We'll also have contractual protections in place to make sure that all of the standards that you just heard are met, including liquidated damages and period secure default in the event that they don't need their contractual obligations.
Are there any other questions in the middle?
Thank you. Just one quick question. You indicated that we have a surplus of $2 to $3 million. So why not use some of that surplus to trade the cost of this system? And again, I want to state that I support the need to purchase a new system. It will, it does sound like it will result in an increase in our bill rate for at least two years. So why not use some of our existing surplus to offset the cost?
Hi, this is Eric Harrington. The Board of Finance had debate about that very topic. And we decided it made sense to pay for this over 20 years, since it's a long-lived asset of a significant amount of money. The other thing, too, is we have very low borrowing costs. Our borrowing costs right now would be about 3.5%. We're earning more money on our investments than the 3.5%. So the consensus of the Board of Finance was it made sense to spread the cost over time, keep the money, and earn more money return on that investment than we would pay otherwise.
So we're earning more money on our investments than the cost of our?
Yes.
All right, before we move on, any more questions in the middle? All right, the same on the left side. Are there any questions on the left side or on the side of this room?
Hi, Sandra Janek, 38th Street. Just a couple of questions. I think Mr. Walters was probably right. I know you said at the beginning, who actually made the decision that we needed a coverage on my field search? Who made the decision? I mean, who made the, who did the original analysis that decided we needed five towers rather than four?
That would be the consultant.
That was you?
That's our consultants here.
Okay, okay. And I know you put up some maps showing the coverage for the five towers. I know you put up some maps for the five towers. Do you have any map showing what the four tower coverage would be?
Not with us at night, no.
Okay. Do you have any of your matrix? This lady had asked for a matrix, so have a matrix showing cost and benefits versus all of the increments. Do you have anything that you could show us? Do you have a slide or anything that I could see?
So a couple of things. With respect to, I'm sorry, your first question was with respect to the decision on that and the maps. So both bidders obviously provided a comprehensive analysis with coverage maps. The purpose of this particular meeting was to discuss, this decision was essentially made by the committee to go with this current vendor. So because that's the resolution here and being provided, that's the one that was shown by virtue of, in terms of coverage. So we have them, yes, to answer the question. We did not present them because they were not the successful bidder.
Okay, I guess I'm just a simple person who would like to see what whole thing is that I'm buying. And I have one more question. I know you put up a slide relative to the tax impact of this. Again, I'm a simple girl. Can you tell me what that means to my tax bill, bottom line? How much extra am I going to be paying in taxes? And again, I don't doubt the need for this at all. I support upgrading and everything else for all the assets in our place and everything. But I would like to know what it really means to me.
Yeah, I can answer that question. So assuming no other changes at all, assuming a $400,000 appraised home, $280,000 assessed value, that's the median value in the town, it would increase your tax bill by $89. So it would increase it from $6,336 a year to $6,426 per year. But like the slide said, the Board of Finance has been anticipating this expenditure and other capital expenditures for many years. And we've been building up reserves for the sole purpose, or one of the main purposes, was to smooth out and negate any impacts of some of the monies that we were saving up for. So, for example, last year, Collins, right, we spent, we put $2.2 million into a capital fund to earn interest in anticipation of this and other capital spends. Next year, we'll just fund less or nothing at all. So that will offset any impact from just doing this spending by itself. Does that make sense?
Any other questions on the left side?
Yes, thank you. Annie Hornish-Strahl Avenue. A question about the state system. Was it similar to what the other contractors proposed? And with the state system, what would be the cost to taxpayers? Is East Windsor getting it done through state grants and therefore no cost to taxpayers? Or is there some cost incurred by the East Windsor residents?
Yeah, they have to, I think they have $2 million that they're spending plus whatever the state is giving them grants for.
Okay, and was the state's?
And so, but that's going to end up, even though the system is in East Windsor, it will be a state system, part of their state system. So any state agency that roams through the area will be using, you know, the town's radio system coverage.
And what's wrong with that?
There's nothing wrong with that, but you have to build a robust network to accommodate the extra mobile and portable traffic.
But the cost for the system that would satisfy Southfield? Are you saying it would have been about $2 million?
No, no, so, did you want?
So a couple of things. One, we did try to go after a significant grant. We were approved, let me backtrack. We were approved for submission to the Federal Appropriations Committee for it, for the entire cost through Chris Murphy, Senator Murphy. Unfortunately, when it reached there, it died and we missed out on the grant. And that was predominantly the largest grant we were able to kind of find that would have helped us in this situation. What I will say is, in November of this year, I did get an analysis from the state in order for their vendor to build the system here. And it was roughly $6.2, $6.3 million. So we're talking $1 million more for their system. And it was using sites in Bloomfield, and there were a couple of other towers that they were using. But it wasn't, you know, it was a little different than, much different than what we were currently experiencing with either of the other two bidders.
And how many towers would the state have recommended?
The, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. I don't have that in front of me. I more or less have the entire cost. They would have used the site at the landfill. Looks like three sites. The landfill, Fire Station 4, which are both in play for us, in addition to another tower that they have access to in Bloomfield. And even with using those two towers and the site in Bloomfield, there were roughly six, I, I, or it was 6.8 million. So it was almost $7 million for that project.
Right, the state generally does, or, and I acknowledge that. But less, same, is that a four-tower solution or?
I was, sorry.
Three-tower solution.
Well, three. Well, go ahead. The infrastructure would still need to be there.
Yeah, so it's part of a state system, so they have towers throughout the state. So to get coverage in Southfield, there would be three, I think it was three towers in Southfield. But then other towers, surrounding towns, that is part of the state system. So I'm not sure what the total number is, but it's, if I remember the coverage maps, it was probably five or six in that range.
Right, three in Southfield, in Southfield. Yeah, that's, my concern is, there was that one of the contractors who did not get the bid spoke up at a Board of Selectmen meeting and claimed that Southfield was underpaying, overpaying by half a million dollars, that there was no need for towers, no need for the five towers. And that's where the concern is. And there's been a reluctance to give out information to the public ahead of time so we could look at the analysis that the committee looked at. That was unavailable, and we're going to have to probably FOIA those records. But the public was not privy to that, so that was a little concerning with that. And I have one final question. One of your slides said that there's going to be a $410,000 cost for savings of 30 grand per year. Are you saying that that initial layout is going to save us 30 grand per year? By the time that $410,000 expenditure is going to be realized, I mean, all, we're talking a lot of comments on immersion technologies here, things are going to change on how the systems operate. And how do we justify that kind of expense with only $30,000 a year savings?
I would just, I can, I'll defer to backhand. I think the captain wants to say something as well. But what I will say is, that expenditure is newer and better technology for the fiber lines, which would enhance this entire project. If we continue to remain with the T1 and copper, it would not allow this system to be made in the way that we desire. And if we would continue to have the shortfalls that we're currently experiencing with the tower going down out west due to water flooding and things of that nature. So fiber, I think, is what everything is going to, aside from the newer technology. But that's going to be around, in my opinion, for a while.
I did a very quick little bit of research here relative to T-Mobile in New York City. In 2023, the New York City Police Department spent $500 million on a new radio system. I don't think it's been superseded or will be replaced by T-Mobile. I think T-Mobile is an enhancement. The NYPD would not spend half a billion dollars on a radio system with the idea that around the corner, we're just going to replace that with a bunch of cell phone technology. So I just want folks to be aware that the New York City Police Department has spent a significant sum of money very recently to upgrade their radio system.
Yeah, and just to add to that, if we're going back to New York City in the IG, that's supplementary, and it's actually, it's not the underlying foundational solution. So they have sort of fiber running throughout the city. They added IG and wireless to enhance and supplement, but it's not their core system, as Chief Cunningham mentioned. The, going back to that T1 line, and I know Chief Cannon mentioned this, but we've had tons of outages when it rains, when there's wind, and that's just not a solid foundation you would want to build any new system on. Cell phones right now, I'm in this building, I have one bar, and I'm on FirstNet as I have a town and a cell phone. So if we had an emergency here right now and we were relying on this one bar to get, well, let's act like they were all here, we wouldn't be communicating, like officers, like any emergency personnel would not be communicating effectively over this cell service right here. And I know for me personally, if I had an emergency at my house in town, I would not want that to be, you know, to reliable communication to, like, say, be the thing happening with my family. So I think there's just a little bit of mixed up on that, that it's not, it is a complementary added thing to enhance, but it's not your core underlying infrastructure that you were installed.
And to address your big question real quickly, based off of our consultant studies, they requested, or they thought it was best that we have five towers. And so that's what went on the bid. Now, the bidder that you mentioned didn't follow the bid, so we didn't technically have to accept that. At that time, we spoke with the town attorney to stay competitive. We allowed them to match the bid that was requested by the town. So we don't even have to be really talking about Marcus radios because they didn't even put their original bid in correctly. For some of the fairness, our process was even more competitive, if I ever get a backhand.
Hi, Neil Hornish-Strahl Avenue. Just a couple of really quick questions based on emails that were included, and I think it was the Board of Finance meeting minutes, concerning the bidder who did not win, who said we could get the same effective coverage with fewer towers. I think the email said that their bid was like $1 million cheaper. And I think the email thread said that there was concerns about the reliability of their coverage predictions. So my questions are, first, did that bidder offer a similar guarantee for coverage that the winning bidder offered? And with concerns with the coverage map, was there any additional discussion with them to find out why, if their calculations were accurate and how they came about with those calculations? Thank you.
So, so we've been doing coverage predictions for lots of years, and we've done lots of systems, and they've been, they've been pretty right on. So we're pretty solid with the maps that regenerate. So, and, and the winning bidder, you know, his maps look similar to ours. So, and so did the other bidder, his looks similar. So something, something doesn't look right there, right? One of the three or two or three are, you know, are wrong. So, so we're pretty comfortable with what we've projected here for coverage, reliable coverage. And just think of, you know, you take, if we get four sites, if we get a five-site system, and we take out one site that we feel is important, you're taking away some signal in that, in the general area. And it's, you know, probably not needed for in-street coverage. It's definitely needed for in-b buildings, and that's what we concentrate. Buildings are very difficult to penetrate. You know, it depends on the construction, how close they are to the tower. There's a bunch of variables there. So a five-site system will give the town the high level of coverage reliability they need to communicate. And that was the consensus of the committee. And, and I think it was unanimous that, you know, the site isn't, that site is needed to provide the coverage.
Derek Donnelly, town attorney. Let me also just explain a little bit about the bid purchase policy for the town. So I think that's important because there's this big red
because there's this big red herring here about a four-site system. When the town goes out to bid on something, we put out specifications to the public, to bidders at large, and ask them to meet those specifications. The town has already decided what those specifications are. So as a great example, we go out to bid on a fire truck, okay? We say we need a ladder truck, an aerial, you know, your typical red fire truck. If somebody comes back with an ambulance, right, for a million dollars less, they don't win the bid because they bid a million dollars less on ambulance, all right? We're, we're asking through our consultants, we spent a lot of money, we went through an RFP process, to hire these guys to tell us what's best because we are not experts in that area. They said five-site system, okay? Meeting these specifications. We put it out to bid. We get one bid that meets our requirements and another bid that doesn't. So what the first selectman just said, what we could have done at that point is said, hey, look, we're done. We got our one bid. Put it out to bid, this is all we got. We're going to go forward. That's not what we did here because it's very important that we got a good sense of a competitive price if we're going to go out to bond on this. So instead, we went back. We said, we're going to reopen the RFP. We're going to allow you to meet our minimum requirements. And then we'll judge you, we'll score you appropriately as if you had bid it right the first time. And that's what we did here. So at the end of the day, we got two competitive bids. They were very similar in price. They were very similar in score. The other guys lost out by a, by a thin margin. And then they show up to meetings and complain that they bid a billion dollars less. Well, yeah, because they did, they were trying to sell us an ambulance when we're asking for a fire truck.
Are there any other questions on the left side before we finish up? We're going to wrap up.
Sir, can I just address that real quick as well? So your question relative to the percentage coverage, we did in fact look at that. I will tell you, that was some basis of conversation from the selection committee with our consultants because we were trying to essentially deduce where the gap was going to be. Essentially, based on our conversations, it was going to be in residential buildings, in commercial buildings is where the drop-off started to deteriorate with the four-site system. So if you can imagine being inside hood, a commercial building, trying to have a communication, we will have gone from, you know, a five-site system that would offer us, you know, a percentage or two higher in terms of coverage, where if we were to go with the four-site system, there was a drop-off of a percent or two there relative to that in-building coverage. So, you know, when we're comparing apples to apples, we wanted to handle it in the best way possible to make sure that we're getting them, you know, essentially the most bang for the buck. But in the same vein, have the best enhanced coverage that we can. So this entire process was a focus on that coverage. I think by basis of reviewing both of those bids, that's where they dropped off a little bit in the sense of their in-building coverage. There might be, you know, a belief on their side that they could match that. We're relying on our consultants in providing us guidance relative to that in terms of our overall review and rating of those systems. So it was a part of our conversation. It was certainly discussed. I don't think the values were a million dollars off. They were probably half that, I think, or maybe four hundred thousand. Two, two, two eighteen, I think, right? Or two eighty, once we finally had five sites versus five sites. But it wasn't, and I, to be honest, I've looked at so many of the proposals, the values have always changed on the basis of our conversations. But they were significantly lower on the basis of a four-site system with some drop-off degradation for in-commercial buildings. When the committee looked at it and reviewed it, ultimately, the outcome was to go with the five-site system because we had that additional percentage or two for in-building coverage relative to that four-site system. That was there.
All right, are there any other questions on the left side? It's you, one hand.
Hi, Dave Goff here, thirty-two nineteen Phelps Road. I've got sort of a different question. And it's, who is going to be doing the oversight?
By virtue of leading the committee and the fact that the dispatch committee, I have dispatched this handle of the police department. I don't think it qualifies as a manager. We have kept on our consultants to assist us through that process as well. So it would be a combination of the two of us. And the committee would be advisor process throughout as well.
So my follow-up question is, who's going to be doing the verification and validation of the system?
So I know by contract, there's some, some of that is contained in the agreement on the basis that we signed with the vendor. They have certain responsibilities that they have to meet. Obviously, we'll be meeting with them to ensure that they're doing that. With respect to, I'll leave it to.
So prior to installation, the vendor will order all the equipment and they will set it up in their, in a facility and put the system together before it goes out to the field for installation. So we call that staging. So at staging, the whole system is right there in one room. Everything's fired up. And then the project team, you know, will go there and will go through a various testing of each of the components in the system. With, you know, making sure that everything is operational. You know, measurements and observation tests are done. Backup is, is also, we'll make the system fail to see, you know, if backup equipment comes in. So, so this whole staging process of testing is where the committee will have to prove before it goes out to the field to get the sites. So if it fails, you know, it has to be fixed by the vendor. But there is pretty, you know, a set of stringent tests that, that this test goes through, this system goes through for testing.
So, so my concern is, this is a five-point-two-million-dollar project. It's predominantly electronics, computers, and software. I'm not a work anyone in town on day one who needs the requirements to ensure that we're getting what we're getting. So we have the building department, they do a lot of regular electrical work, they do account work, the foundation work. I'm not a work anyone that we have on staff that is qualified to do electronics, software, and computers. So what I think I'm hearing is that we have a consultant that we aren't paying him to do this work? Or is this an extra money we're going to have to pay? Are we paying an extra money? Is this part of the deal? I'm not sure.
So please enter that area with that in the beginning. First phase, you did the study. The second phase goes to assist us through the RFP process. The third phase, which has yet to be paid, would be for the building phase and the assistance through that process. I would also argue that they are our experts in the field that would be able to assist us in making the appropriate determinations relative to your concern. I'm certainly not an electrical engineer.
Okay, so I'm fine, I'm fine with that part. I'm not fine with the verification and validation. We paid a consultant to come up with a design and a system. And now we're going to pay them to validate and verify that when they came up with works, that would never happen.
It's not a validation that the system they came up with works. It would be a validation that the chosen vendor to build the system.
They told them five towers. This is where it goes. This is, you know, this is how it goes. So they're going to validate that what they decided works is their bias, from what they're biased. And we might apply to pay you if you should pay for a third-party independent consultant to give the verification and validation again for five years. And I'm more than willing to pay the extra money if it's probably over fifty thousand dollars. I'm more than willing to do that because I believe he may be the best consultant in the world. But he's going to be overseeing what he decided that the town would have. And I, that's my concern. And I think it needs to look at. And I owe it all this.
All right, are there any questions on the left side? We still have the HVAC projects to go over. So any final questions here on the left side? Okay, I don't see any. At this point, we're going to move on to the HVAC projects. Do I see one more question in the middle? All right, we'll go back to this last question.
Sorry, I just want to know, let's see if I can articulate this. You know how iPhone, you get your updates all the time and your technology or some stuff? Does this five million dollars include, I think an update passable between technology two years ago? Does it include that? I mean, just automatically update or upgrade? Or is that still a question? I'm sorry, I just wanted to.
No, that's, that's unfortunate. So they're always working on improving their software and making sure that their equipment is working. So there are periodic system, you know, software upgrades. And so the town will be getting those on a regular basis as part of the maintenance and the demand.
All right, did that answer that? Okay. All right, well then, we're going to move on to the HVAC projects. I'm going to invite, I'm going to invite Assistant Manager Eric Remington,
Good evening, everyone. Matt Dombaro, Superintendent. Started in July and it's great to be here. Much of the project that Eric and Larry Fainor, Director of Facilities, is here as well, are here to cover, began well before I arrived, but certainly have been part of it since I've joined the Suffield community. I do want to commend the school district and the town for being proactive in pursuing these HVAC projects through a grant. By doing so and being proactive and showing the foresight to do that, the equipment that we need updated on our buildings will come at a cost that saves the town well over a billion and a half dollars. A great deal of work goes into that. And I appreciate the work of Eric and Larry, also First Selectman Moll and his staff in coordinating with us in all the steps of this. And also the Permanent Building Commission led by Kevin Goff, who has been working with us as well in getting these projects ready to go out to bid and to be finished. And I'll also add that some of the aspects, the boilers in particular, that were able to be included in this project, I would say, especially coming in as an outsider initially and being familiar with some of this project, were, were a long shot. And so I give the town credit, again, for pursuing that when I think indications were that we probably wouldn't get any reimbursement on the boiler. So the fact that those did get included is a real positive. So I'll turn it over to Eric to talk more about the HVAC project.
So these two projects that we're here to talk about tonight were actually approved at a town meeting two years ago in December of 2022. So the appropriation for both projects was approved for the projects to be funded through the town's undecided fund balance. And those same town meetings approved us to apply for the grants for these projects. So what we're here to talk about tonight or to ask for tonight is really just to change the funding mechanism of the projects that have already been approved. So in 2022, the state provided funding for their competitive reimbursement grants for HVAC projects in schools with the objective to improve indoor air quality. And it was competitive with a selection criteria including the age and condition of the existing equipment, current air quality issues, whether the town had a facilities master plan, which we did, and the town's ability to finance the project. So the first round of funding was funded in fiscal year 2023. So we applied for that in December of 2022. And we were not awarded the grant for these projects in, in that first round. So a year ago, in December of 2023, we reapplied for the grants in, in round two. And in May, we were notified that we were awarded. Three grants under this, or three of our projects were awarded under the grant. So I think I've covered this. Tonight, we're only here to talk about bonding two of the projects. One of the projects, another project that was actually approved was the replacement of the boiler at Spaulding School. That project was actually already completed when we applied for the grant. But the grant did allow for retroactive funding. So we've already been approved for reimbursement by the state on that Spaulding boiler. So we're not asking for funding tonight. So just the project at the high school. The high school has eighteen rooftop units that supply the air conditioning and ventilation for the building. Those are original to the building. So in 2020, 2001 is the age of those units. And this has been identified in the facility study and the ACE capital plan as needing replacement in the intermediate term. And so by applying for this grant, the state's funding a large portion of the cost of the replacement. If we waited until the actual end of life of these units, we would not get any reimbursement. The town would have to fund the entire project. Okay. So the estimated cost of the project is three-point-eight million dollars. The grant reimbursement is about one-point-seven million. And we do expect that it will provide higher levels of filtration than we have currently. So hence the improvement to the indoor air quality. The EPA has issued new refrigerant standards that take effect January first, and this project will comply with those. And one important thing is, we're not changing any of the existing system. This is a like-for-like replacement of the units that are there. So we're not changing any of the system design. And very quickly, McAllister Boiler. There's two boilers at McAllister. And this is the secondary boiler. The primary boiler was replaced several years ago. The current boiler is thirty-two years old. Life expectancy on it is forty years. And again, this has been identified as something in the medium term that we need to deal with. So we opportunistically have taken advantage of the state grant to get the state to fund a large portion of the replacement of the boiler. Again, that would have to be funded by, a hundred percent by tax dollars if we waited for, for end of life. And just, again, the estimated cost, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand. And we're going to get about seventy thousand dollars back from the state for this grant. We do expect some energy savings. We do expect some energy savings through the project. So I think that was the express review, but anybody has any questions?
That was a good express review. I started my right side, just as I did on the project. Are there any questions on your left side here? No? Any questions in the middle section? I see a hand here. Mike's coming to you.
Again, I support this project, oh, Victoria Copes, Hickory Street. Again, I support this project as well. The question is, I'm a McAllister boiler, it's only 200,000, why not just take that out of the surplus? Really? The second question is, for the high school HVAC, it's 3.8 million, when we get our reimbursement from the state, where will those funds go?
When we get those reimbursements from the state, the monies will go into our general fund. They'll go back into our surplus.
And for the Thompson boiler, why not just?
Why not just pay the 200K out of our surplus rather than burden the taxpayers with additional costs?
Well, it's the same answer as what I mentioned before. The money, the interest that we'll pay on the debt, likely around three and a half percent, is lower than what we're going to get most likely on our assets that we have invested in. That answer your question?
Yes. It was so agreeable, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I didn't agree either initially on, not only this, I wanted to fund the radio project through a, through our normal budget. We have members of our Board of Finance who are very savvy with debt and financing and have been doing this a long time, longer than me. And, you know, they convinced me, and I think they're right, that it's proper to take these projects along with any other projects that might come up relating to the town buildings and bond for it based on, like I said, our very high credit rating, we get very low interest rate and it makes sense to pay for it that way.
Just one more question. So when I looked at the debt service schedule in the 2425 budget package, it looks like every four years we apply for bonding. So beginning in 2012, we apply for bonding, then in 2016, 2020, and here we are in 2024. So conceivably, we may not apply for bonding again for any future projects that we need for another four years. Is that correct?
First, we, you know, I joked about the four years, that's not planned, that's not set in stone, that's just the way it's happened over the last 15 years or so. With respect for the bond, we're not going out as soon as this meeting's over, assuming everything gets passed, and borrowing. We're waiting for these projects to happen before we get completed, before we do that. So we're going to be drawing down on our cash investments over the next year to pay the cost and then we're going to go to bond. And in that time period, there might be other things that arise that need to be included in the bond as well.
Does that answer your question? Any other questions in the middle section? All right, any questions on my left side? All right, seeing none, this is going to wrap up the public information meeting. I'm going to take a quick break and then we'll go right into the town meeting. So everyone head tight. Thanks.
Welcome to the October 19th, 2024 Town of Southfield Town Meeting. Before we start, just a few housekeeping notes. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone who speaks at the microphone, please list your name and your address. Our first order of business is to elect a moderator for tonight's meeting. Are there any nominations for moderators?
Kristen Lambert, 22 Old Farms Lane. I recommend, or I suggest Ed McInney as moderator for this meeting.
We have a second. Any other nominations from the floor? With no other nominations, all in favor for Ed McInney to be moderator, please say aye. Opposed, say nay. Ed McInney is our moderator.
All right. Okay, good evening, one and all. Looks like everybody had a good time at the informational session before we got going. All right, so please everybody rise, join me with a pledge of allegiance to our flag. And proudly, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Everybody's seating. I'll ask the town clerk to please read the call of tonight's meeting.
A notice of a special town meeting. All electors and citizens qualified to vote in the town meeting of the Town of Southfield, Connecticut, are hereby notified that the Board of Selectmen is convening a special town meeting of the town to be held at Southfield Middle School, 350 Mountain Road, Southfield, Connecticut, on Thursday, December 19th, 2024, at 7:30 PM for the following purpose. Number one, to elect a moderator. Number two, to consider and vote on the following proposed resolutions entitled. Resolution, authorizing an appropriation of $5,230,000 for the emergency services radio project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $5,230,000. A resolution authorizing an appropriation of $3,840,000 for Southfield High School HVAC project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $3,840,000. Resolution, authorizing an appropriation of $210,000 for the McAllister Intermediate School HVAC project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $210,000. The full text of this foregoing authorization of the resolutions are in file and open to inspection at the Office of the Town Clerk, Southfield, Connecticut, for use or inspection of any interested person. Dated at Southfield, Connecticut, on this ninth day of December 2024, Town of Southfield Board of Selectmen, Colin Moll, First Selectman, Peter Hill, Selectman, Kathleen Harrington, Selectman, Jeremiah Mahoney, Selectman, Melvin Shafens, Selectman, published December 12th, 2024, in the Hartford Current.
Thank you very much. Couple of, couple of points I'd like to make before we get going. There was just an hour and a half's worth of an informational session regarding the towers and a much briefer informational session regarding the changes to the schools and so on. So we don't want to reinvent the wheel, folks. You, most of you have been here for an hour and a half at least, maybe two by this point. So with that being said, there is a... Do I have any preliminary motions from the town attorney?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the use of paper ballots and vote by tally of voice vote.
Do I have a second to that motion? All those in favor of eliminating paper ballots signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, that's the way we'll conduct our business this evening. I'll take a motion on the first matter on the agenda for this evening. Is anybody going to make that motion? Please identify yourself.
Carol Tibodow, 50, Chestnut Circle.
Thank you.
Resolved that the town meeting of the Town of Southfield hereby approves the resolution authorizing an appropriation of $5,230,000 for the emergency services radio project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $5,230,000, copies of which have been made available to the public.
Do I have a second for that motion? I have multiple seconds here. All right, very good. So now, as I indicated before, we're not going to reinvent the wheel. There's been lengthy discussion about this issue. I will start by taking comments regarding the issue, but if we get repetitive, I'm just going to cut it off because you've all been here for two hours now, so we don't need to do it all over again. So I'll start with comments. Do I have any comments regarding this motion, not the HVAC motions, but this motion alone? I don't see any hands. There are no, no comments. Okay, very good. Since we have already discussed this at length, I'm going to move to a motion. All those in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it? The matter passed. In the same fashion, we'll go to the second motion. I'll take the second motion, which goes to the issue of the HVAC. Do I have someone to make that motion?
Motion.
Hold on a minute, please.
Tracy Hasfeld, 875 Copper Hill Road. Resolved that the town meeting of the Town of Southfield hereby approves the resolution authorizing an appropriation of $3,840,000 for the Southfield High School HVAC project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $3,840,000, copies of which have been made available to the public.
Do I have a second on that motion? I have seconds, multiple seconds here. Very good, thank you. As with the, as with the first motion, I'll take comments addressed to this HVAC motion. Remember, we have a third one to come up. Are there any comments regarding this? No comments. What I will also do is, are there any questions regarding this issue? Because there wasn't, there was the express version that Eric Remington gave us. I think he explained it reasonably well, but do I have any questions that might be addressed to Eric Remington or another member regarding the second motion on our agenda? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Unanimous, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll go on to the third matter on the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Beth Shafens, 803 Mapleton Avenue. Resolved that the town meeting of the Town of Southfield hereby approves the resolution authorizing an appropriation of $210,000 for the McAllister Intermediate School HVAC project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $210,000, copies of which have been made available to the public.
Do I have a second to that motion? I have multiple seconds here. All right, as I just did with the first motion on HVAC, is there any commentary regarding I don't see any. Are there any questions again, which might be directed to Eric Remington or a member of the Board of Finance or whatever, regarding the second motion only? I'm sorry, second HVAC motion only. Is there anybody? All those in favor of the motion as presented indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Unanimous, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'll take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Thank you very much.